All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call our committee of the whole meeting to order for Thursday, December 7th. This is the cancellation from the Monday meeting. So welcome, everyone, to council chambers. We have some folks in the gallery this evening, which is wonderful. And welcome, of course, to the folks watching online. We're going to start by checking in if there are any items to add to the agenda. And since I've just landed back, I would like to discuss the Marine Renewables Conference. So we'll add that as item number. Is it 12.1, I guess? Okay. Are there any other additions? Counselor Digdon?
Yeah, Madam Warden, I would list, I guess, just a quick review on a conversation I had with a local resident on a 911 call. So I think maybe just 911 protocol, or I know it doesn't fit within our, maybe just some literature for the public.
Thank you, Counselor Digdon. So any further additions to the agenda? Okay, so here and now, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second, or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Digdon. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. Thanks, folks. So the first item on the agenda is the review of minutes. So those are from November 6, 2023, Committee of the Whole. They were produced or provided in advance for your review. Are there any errors or omissions to report? And if not, I'll hear a motion, please.
I'm moved to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second, or please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on our agenda, we're going to move into our presentations. So the first presentation we have up is related to Woodland Angelica. And we have Claire Doyle from the Almedam Garden Club here with us this evening. So Claire, I'll ask you to come up to the table and you can have a seat in front of the microphone on the other side there. And when you're getting ready to speak, if you could just press the little red button on your thing and it'll activate your mic, okay? And thank you for being here with us today. And yeah, just if you could introduce yourselves and take it away.
So good evening, everyone. So my name is Claire Doyle, and I'm chairperson of the Almedam Garden Club. And to my left is Bridget Sprouse. She's a member, also a member of our garden club. And Bridget provided the technical assistance to put together the presentation tonight, and she'll be sharing that with us. So we thank you for inviting us to the table this evening. I'd like to begin by saying just a few words about the garden club. We're a registered entity, and we've been registered, we've joined stock since 2018. And we have presently, we have 41 club members, garden club members. And we belong to the Nova Scotia Association of Garden Clubs. And we also belong to a network of garden clubs throughout Cape Breton. Our mandate is to encourage the love of gardening. And I think everybody loves gardening, especially since 2020, since the pandemic. There was an explosion of garden and of people, you know, taking gardens in. So we do, well, like, we promote gardening through different activities. We offer gardening tips on our Almedam Garden Club Facebook page. We provide educational tips there. And that's open to the members, but it's also open to the community. We host plant sales, and we do seed exchanges, and we create gardening events, gardening fun events. And we partner with the Rocky Bay Irish Club. We have a community garden there, and they allow us to use their space and to use, you know, to use their land. And so we have a very good relationship with the Rocky Bay Irish Club. And we also are trying to establish a daffodil trail on Almedam. And we've been promoting that for the past few years, where we encourage individuals to plant daffodils. It's the first flower that kind of comes out in the spring, and it's colorful, and it brightens us up after a long winter. And we've had some, a good partnership with the municipality, because the municipality has bought some daffodils from us. And they purchase the daffodils and we plant them. So it's a good partnership. And if you guys notice in the spring, through the, in Arishad on the main, where you people have beautiful gardens there, the daffodils like are popping up, and it's really quite lovely to see them. You know, at the beginning of June, they last for three weeks, and it's kind of the beginning of the gardening season, so, yeah. Our presentation this evening is on that invasive weed called Woodland Angelica. And it's found abundantly throughout Richmond County. Everywheres. But particularly, we think, on Almedam, because Almedam is seeing an infestation of it. And I don't know, I think maybe it's because we're near the waterway, you know, probably, I'm not sure. But it is everywheres, that's for sure. And so you'll find them in the ditches, and you'll find them in open fields and private woodlands, even on the beach now. That you're seeing them on the beach. They're everywheres. And so, yeah. Anyway, I'll ask Bridget to go through the presentation, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, thanks for having us. We're here to talk about Woodland Angelica, and I'm sure most of you are able to recognize it when you see it, have even battled some of it. But it poses a threat to the kind of the natural rhythm of other plants by outcompeting for sunlight, space, and even pollinators. So we'll talk a bit about how that works, a bit about the plant, and then what you can do and some suggestions that we have. So it was first introduced here in the 1600s or 1700s, and has since spread to other provinces. But as Claire has said, it's, we're kind of ground zero in Cape Breton for Angelica silvestris. There are a few varieties of Angelica, but this is the variety that we seem to be inundated with. And it's a large biennial, meaning that the first year it grows, we see the plant is relatively small and doesn't flower until the second season or the second year. And then it dies and it's finished. So it takes two years for it to flower and to create more seeds. When it flowers, that is when it's the tallest, and it can reach up to two meters tall, two meters high, so large, tall stands. And it flowers late in the summer and into September. And, you know, we know what it looks like, but it has white to pale eyelike flowers in small kind of packages of umbrellas, sort of shaped like an umbrella as a whole. And it grows anywhere, really. It's not particular. It likes dry land, it likes swampy land, you know, it has preferences, but really it's drought resistant. And the seeds float, which is why you see it in drains, because that's how they travel with rainwater. Otherwise, they just kind of fall down, and that's where they can grow the following year. But it travels easily on water, and then it also is, you know, tolerant of shade, drought, all these things. So it's a real survivor. Okay. So like I said, it competes for sunlight with other native plants. And it seems to be delicious to the pollinators, because it sort of distracts them from other wildflowers and berries and other plants that you'd want, you know, the bees to be pollinating. So it kind of, you'll see, if you see an Angelica, it's almost guaranteed to have some sort of insect on it. Because, and you can smell it, smells delicious, like a grape popsicle. But it, so it distracts pollinators from other, from other things that we want them to be pollinating, which decreases the density of other plants in an area, because it doesn't allow them to proliferate. Angelica replacing the berries there. How to stop it? As you might imagine, mowing works. You'd have to do it at least twice a growing season and before it goes to seed, right? So while it's flowering, at the beginning of the flowering period or even before that. But if you take out some of the flowers of the second year plant, it'll just grow new flowers. So you really have to kind of come at it multiple times. It's like a, it just keeps coming back. Weed whack in your drains? You can dig the plant out, or if it's rained a lot, you can pull it right out. My friend's mother just does that. And then also, if you're really buried in Angelica, like we've been, and like through the forest and things, you can cut the flowers during their flowering period or when you see them just starting to form with clippers, our secateurs, or a machete. Clippers work the best, I find. And also, it's not toxic to livestock. So if you do have animals, you can graze them on it, and that would work, too. Do you want to add anything?
Well, no, other than one, one plant, one flower itself can produce up to 10,000 seeds. And, you know, it gets carried by the wind, the birds carry it. And I think that's probably why. And we've had a lot of people come to our table to talk about the blueberries and the cranberries and the wild berries that is now, it's affecting them. Because these, our berries are kind of low to the ground. And then you've got these weeds, or, you know, the Angelica that grows way tall. And it's, it just, they're not getting the sun, they're not getting pollinated. And it is a big problem. You know, it's a big problem here on the island, because a lot of people, they go in the woods and they do collect all of the berries that are out there. And so they're seeing quite a decline of them on the island itself, and I'm sure it's everywhere else in Richmond County.
Yeah. So just a word on cutting the Angelica flowers off, and then also what we can expect as far as results from putting in this effort. Like I said, it'll take multiple passes in a season. So kind of cutting off the flowers, you know, all the flowers that you can see on a certain day isn't going to eradicate the plant. They'll grow new flowers. So you just have to stay on top of it, if that's the approach you plan to take. But also, because it's a biennial, removing the plants that you see flowering doesn't mean that next year won't have flowering, you won't have flowering Angelica, right? Because it takes them two years. So to really see results, it'll probably take at least two, three years. And then, you know, you'll have a real reduction. But so it's important not to be discouraged when you don't see immediate results from the effort. Yeah. And we attended a demonstration, a presentation on Angelica removal by the Nova Scotia Invasive Species Council. And they were suggesting using black bags, but as we know here, the dump doesn't accept black bags. We don't want to compost Angelica, so what do you do? If you cut the Angelica while it's flowering, before it's gone to seed, you know, if you look at it, you see it hasn't gone to seed, it's okay to just let the flowers drop. Otherwise, it just takes so much time and space, and you have a bunch of black bags that you don't know what to do with, so don't worry about it. We all know how to kind of make sure that weeds die. Just throw them on some gravel or in a dry spot in the sun. Okay, and is Angelica dangerous? We've kind of heard people saying that it poses risks to asthmatics, that it'll burn your skin. But for most, I don't know about asthma, if people are sensitive to bee, to any kind of pollen, then obviously you'd want to wear a mask if you're trying to get rid of your Angelica. But otherwise, it's not a toxic plant. It's just recommended that the public take precautions when removing it, because it looks like other toxic plants. So if you're good at identifying Angelica, you don't have anything to worry about. If you are nervous or unsure, however, you can wear gloves. It's not a big deal. Yeah, that's good. Okay. And here's some suggestions that we had to raise awareness. That's kind of number one, just for more people to know about it, to know it's, it may be kind of quaint looking, but it's not good for our local ecosystem, and it doesn't help other plants that we value to thrive. So just awareness, maybe an article in Richmond Reflections, or even a page on a website, municipality's website, about local invasive plants that you can look out for, something like that. Claire was thinking about events in the community to help reduce Angelica?
Yeah, we were, you know, because sometimes you see groups of people that says adopt the highway or people kind of go out and do cleaning in their, you know, on the highways and in the drains. And I was, we were just kind of thinking, maybe, you know, we could designate like a day where people could kind of go out before, before the Angelica goes to seed. That's the secret. Once it goes to seed, then it's a big problem. You know, then you need to bag them, and you need to take them someplace that it's safe. And we don't have a designated place at the dump, at the landfill where, you know, but maybe we could work with, in partnership with you guys, to designate a spot, you know, where people could actually, instead of just kind of taking them to the dump, it's just to have a designated place to place it there, you know, where it could be buried or something, you know? So it's just some ideas, just some ideas. I know that I kind of took a look at the Weed Control Act, the Provincial Weed Control Act. And it was revised 1989, but it doesn't designate Angelica as a noxious weed. So, but if we, if it's an infestation and it's really starting to damage our ecosystem and all of our natural plants, it, maybe municipality could have a second look at that and work with the provincial government. It hasn't been revised for a long, long time. And, you know, we don't have a weed control inspector here in the county here. So there might be some ideas, you know, where we could look at it and see, and public education. You know, I know that a lot of people in this area have beautiful lawns, well manicured. And, but then you have all of the Angelica in front of the drains, and it really is quite pretty. And I, but it's kind of provide that education to the public, that maybe they should be cutting it down, you know? Wherever they see it on their properties.
We thought about creating an internship, just to help spread awareness if the young people were encouraged to get involved somehow, at least to educate their communities about Angelica, creating some sort of summer internship. And then there's the idea of renting sheep with temporary fencing, some electric fencing, moving them around that way.
And it really works. It really works, yeah.
And that's about it.
All right. Well, thanks. Thank you, folks. Does anybody have questions for our comments for, is Bridget, was it, and Claire? I will tell you, I've been bagging that stuff, because I thought that that was the only way to get rid of it. I'm digging it out, I've become a little obsessive about it. But then I'm always like, what do you do with the bag? So then I'm taking this like toxic waste I feel like I'm handling, now I know better. I'm trying to burn it, or I'm like, you know, whatever. So that's really great information. I'm wondering if maybe we could pop some information on our website, or, you know, if we could use some of your images even, you know? Or maybe there's the presentation and set it up like a little slideshow on.
And I mean, just the idea that, I didn't know myself either, that the difference between.
Oh, can you press your button, Claire?
The Angelica flowering, and then the Angelica, once it goes to seed, it's, it, those are really two important parts, like, you know, to cut it down before it actually goes to seed. And so there's like a time period, towards the end of August, around the month of September, when, you know, the flower kind of dies down. And then it's like what Bridget said, if you cut it while it's in flower, you really don't need to worry, because it's not going to regrow. It's when it goes to seed, it spreads, that's when it regrows. So that's the idea of kind of getting that education out there to the public.
Oh, sorry. You want me to press your button?
I don't think anyone should feel ashamed to have Angelica. I don't think anyone should feel ashamed by, to have Angelica in their yard, because we've been battling it, and we still have some. I don't want anyone to think my property is Angelica-free, it's not.
Can it be sprayed? I am sure there's going to be a question that many homeowners, instead of pulling it out or cutting it with clippers, can it be sprayed with a?
The Nova Scotia Council of Invasive Species that, you know, that we had that meeting in June, they didn't really have, there was no spray out there to actually kill it without using like harsh chemicals, like, you know, so. Natural sprays, I don't think will cut it.
I'm sure, you know, Roundup and other things would work, but I don't know that that's advisable.
Yeah.
You know, that's not a very green option.
Okay, thanks, Claire and Bridget. I think you might be right about the ocean side influence, too, because the other place I notice it is a lot of it in Lordways, like what I would consider in some places an infestation. And that, again, is very open to the ocean there, right? So anyway, very interesting. So maybe we'll take some of your information and put it out as educational material, if you're okay with that, and we'll get the ball rolling. Okay, thank you very much. All right. So the next item on our agenda is affordable housing projects. So Rochelle Sampson is with us from SRD International. And Rochelle, I'll ask you to come on up, if you don't mind. And when you're settled in there, you'll just press the red button to activate your mic.
Hello, everybody. My name is Rochelle Sampson. I'm here on behalf of SRD International, who's a local developer. Some of you may know me, some of you haven't. Back in November of 2020, so it's been about three years now, I recently had talked about an affordable housing development on Grandic Road. So I'm here to circle back and give you guys an update and chat with you guys about that today. So where we left off was, I had done a presentation, we had determined that the zoning was incorrect at the time, that you could not build multi-units on one piece of property. So SRD was instructed to go work with EDPC to amend the bylaw and figure that out. So the conclusion there was that we did that. It took us a year, which was, you know, a bit of a shock, but it got done. And so now we have to apply for a development agreement, which is fine, but it also comes with its own set of checklists that you have to complete, things that might cost money and things that you have to do. So that takes some time as well. Chris Boudreaux, the engineer of the county, had done a presentation to council on the cost to extend water and sewer to the property. So he had provided, I think, three different options. One was to just do it to the two first properties that we're looking at developing. Another option was to run it the rest of the way down the property. And there, I think there was a third, I know there was three cost points, but I can circle back to that once I pull up that email. So to my knowledge, it was supposed to go maybe to like a bylaw meeting to be discussed, because it was a project over a certain amount of money. So in order for the county to consider providing assistance to us, they had to bring it to the meeting for further discussion. And from what I know, that didn't, that didn't go anywhere. So it just didn't happen. So to give you an update, we have increased the amount of units that we're looking to provide. We're looking to build two units, 12 units each, side by side, which is a total of 24 affordable housing units for the county. As you know, the costs have increased since 2020, so we're in a bit of a different ballgame right now. But the affordable housing crisis has continued and is definitely prominent in our small town. So it's definitely still needed. Our new timeline is the spring, so we're looking to break down, break ground in the spring of 2024. We have an affordable housing application going in probably within the next week or so, and as well as CMHC. So that covers the provincial and the federal contributions. So to explain affordable housing a little bit to community members and to council, affordable housing is different than regular housing. Affordable housing, you are capped at how much you can charge for rent. So to keep it affordable for the people who are going to live there, you can't just charge whatever you'd like. You have guidelines and you have boundaries that you have to stay within to ensure that it's affordable. And that's really the market that we're trying to reach. We are not looking at making above affordable housing. We're looking to help the low-income earners, the seniors who are on a pension, you know, and the people who work seasonally, just people who, you know, are trying to just not spend their whole paycheck on rent at this point. So in order to keep rents low, we need to keep our construction costs low. So that's kind of the bounce back between the two. So we can't offer affordable rents if it costs us an excessive amount of money to build these units. So the project is currently valued at $6 million. We, as a developer, are required to put in 20% right off the cuff as equity. So you're looking at about 1.2. So affordable housing also is not a super lucrative investment. You're looking at about a 30-year return, and at that, you're still, it's not big money coming in. It's still affordable rents that are coming in, even once you've paid off your building. So it's a different game altogether than just regular rental renting. So it's really imperative for all levels of government to chip in to ensure that the cost of this building and this development is affordable. So in conclusion, we need to finalize a plan to extend water and sewer to this property, because we have yet to do that. So we are looking for a definitive answer from the council, from the county. If you guys are interested in partnering with us on this project, as we have provincial government, we have the federal government in play already. So there's a couple of options on how you can jump in, and I can pitch them to you guys, and you guys can let me know what you also have available to you. So the development of building our own water and sewer system is at 150,000 to 200,000 to build our own. And we're about 175 meters from the main. So from what I understand, there's a capital growth fund that the council has access to apply for. And so one option is that you could apply to, at the county, the council could apply to extend the water and sewer themselves. It would be their project to extend the sewer, it would service these lots. And these lots are designated to affordable housing. The county could apply to that same fund to help an affordable housing developer with the cost of installing their own water and sewer system. We could look at helping to maintain or service the system. We could, once, you know, if we're going to put our own system in there, you could consider not charging us for the hookup to the main. We chatted with other municipalities who have recently completed some housing development projects with local developers, and they've granted back some of the funds that it was cost. And it was, I think, in relation to, I think, the tax portion. They gave them back the money, the construction tax portion of the expense. And they covered their cost of permits during the construction phase as well. So in conclusion, I mean, it's been three years since we had brought this project to your asses' attention. You know, in those three years, we've still been fighting to kind of move it along. It is a little bit frustrating, the amount of hoops that we've had to jump through to try to bridge a gap of affordable housing in the community. It's cost us time, it's cost us funds, we've had to develop plans, we've had to get permits, we've had to, you know, do quite a few things. So we've been really pushing forward. So we're really looking to understand, you know, if the county is interested in being a partner on this project. And we're looking to determine this, you know, within a very short timeline, as we're looking to break ground in the spring. But without the county, it's going to be really hard to keep this project affordable, which, you know, could then deter us from being able to complete this project at all. So that's kind of my spiel.
Okay, thanks, Rochelle. Okay, thanks Rochelle. So does anybody have any questions for Rochelle? Or comments, whichever?
Yeah, so for for me Rochelle, thanks very much for coming in. And thanks for keeping on pushing this situation. Like you say, it's been a long road for you guys. And then, you know, when I look at the Housing Nova Scotia Report that just came out, and you look at a gap of 370 units, you guys are talking 24 units. And I think you had mentioned or seven in the future. For me, 31 units is 8% of that 370 gap. That's a huge number, in my opinion, right? So for us, I think we got to jump on this train, right? I mean, this this problem ain't going anywhere. So I mean, you look, I think the number is 515 units, you know, before 2027. So this number is just getting worse. So for me, you know, I would like to see us look into CEO. I know that we had looked into the sidewalk project here at at Ekalbopur. And we had worked with our Director of Public Works to see if that capital growth fund was eligible, and if we could get a piece of that $32 million pie. I would like to request that same approach with this project to see if, you know, that project and running that water and sewer for this project would fit in the capital growth fund, right, to see if, again, we can source some of that $32 million pie to see if we can help us help out SRD International with this project. Because I think we got to move these projects forward, and we got to hop on the train ASAP, in my opinion.
Okay, thanks Deputy Warden. And I, yeah, I really do appreciate the urgency of the issue. It's certainly something the Housing Coalition has got on its radar, front and center. And I agree with you, the pace of government is frustratingly slow. Anyway, I, you know, I can agree with you on that for sure. I think, you know, having chatted with staff about this, one of the things that we need to look into in order to kind of move anything forward is to understand whether or not the water and sewer system here can handle the capacity of the kind of development you're talking about. So we know that. So we're looking to, you know, eventually replace the system that we have here. It's it's a multi-multi-million dollar project. I'm thinking, is it in the 20 million?
At least 15.
15 million dollar range, because right now, it's not, it's not operating even right now the way that it needs to. So there's some concern around that, I think, from staff's perspective. But at the end of the day, that is something that, you know, we can look into. So, you know, and in terms of, you know, how we could contribute, or how we might be able to access that capital growth fund to help, whether it's something independent so that it doesn't put that additional strain, or whether it somehow does have a hookup to, then, you know, we we need to look at investigating that. We had agreed to do that through policy. We're going to accelerate that to the, you know, to the top of the list. We've talked about that. But, you know, for right now, I think we need to do a little bit more investigation into what the system could potentially handle from, in terms of that kind of a block of that many units, right, being able to draw on it. So I don't know. Troy, could I like maybe ask you to comment on that about how we might go about that, or if if you've looked into that?
Sure. Thank you for coming in. Again, we have a couple hurdles to cross as well, where when we go into capital, it's usually ident it's restricted to items on our capital plan as well. So that's another hurdle we have to cross as well. But the policy, again, we talked, we just had policy before Committee of the Whole tonight, and I asked council if we could rearrange things so that we could look at sale of municipal land. And working with developers, there was a policy that used to exist here that got rescinded years ago, to see if that can look be looked at again. Because right now, we don't have that policy. But doesn't mean we can't make one, and council can't make decisions to help and assist. We saw that last year when the other money came available for this one as well. But this one was on our capital plan as well, right? So I think we would just want to take it back, let staff look at all the options we have, and come back to council. And I don't know if we could do it for the December meeting, but certainly we could for January meeting.
Well, yeah. Thanks, Troy. Maybe just to keep the pace moving, if we could do an update in December, so that we have some kind of information before we go into the break, even if it's just in terms of what we think a timeline might be. I mean, you know, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think I, you know, I'm seeing some nodding heads around the table. We're very interested in supporting this type of a project. We just need to make sure that we don't break something while we're trying to do that, right? So, yeah, so if we could kind of maybe get a quick little check in on it in December, so we'll make sure that it comes up on the on the agenda. Counselor?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just wanted to make a comment, because I think Rochelle, like in your presentation, you had just made a comment that we had you talked with us about it in November in terms of what we could do with like within our bylaw. So I did do a little bit of research, and I know that we did discuss it in early 2021, I think it was like February or something. And we did have like a pretty robust conversation from what I recall. I'd have to dig out my notes. But but I think the concern at that time was 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 not about, is it important to to support projects like yours, but the bigger picture, which involves, A, can systems manage it, but also B, the precedent setting in like where that could where we could find ourselves rolling. So, you know, today, you're coming to us with one project with a certain potential budget. We have these funds that potentially could be, you know what I mean? But what do we do when it's two years later, and we don't have those pots of funds, or we don't have the ability? Like, it's a murky place that we need to work through a little bit better. And I think, again, correct me if I'm wrong, others at the table, but I think at that time, we just felt like it was a bigger fish than we could fry financially. And and I think that's where it ended up sitting, if I recall. Again, it's been, like you said, it's been almost three years. But I did, like, when I had read your briefing note for your presentation, I was like, I'm pretty sure we talked about that. And like I said, I did do some research and did see that in in early in in December, we discussed it. And then in February, we discussed it again. So so don't think that when you left, we just said, eh, we're good. You know, we knew we did. We did certainly take the conversation seriously. I just, yeah.
And I will say too, since then, because, I mean, we were really concerned about fiscal, you know, capacity and and systems capacity. But there are some new funds available now that didn't exist then, which may make it more possible for us to participate. So so we'll reexamine it with that lens and and considering councillor or the deputy warden's recommendation there, too. Okay?
Yeah, no, just again, you know, I think an apology is probably because you're right. When you look back, and Counselor Sampson, you are right as well. But when you look back, we kind of dropped the ball from three years ago to now, because it seemed to have slipped the slope. And then, again, funding, funding might have been hard or difficult, but it seems like we didn't reach out to to you or to continue to grasp the funding. So I think we do have to move it to the to the definitely to the top of the list. And again, great on you for continuing the last two years to move forward. And, yeah, I think it's one of those things that we we do have to jump on any funding available. One question I do have, you indicated 150 to 200,000 to build your own. So I presume that's if you take the bull by the horns kind of deal, dig it up, put in the pipes and.
Right.
Right. So I don't know how that process works through.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
No?
Sorry, I assumed that you were going to ask process through here, maybe? Yeah. So we have been working with Chris a little bit, and in the process of having to submit an application of the system that we are going to build, we have to submit plans and do all those development ideas, submit it for approval, so that Chris can approve to make sure that it fits the bill and would run. Couple of side notes. One, we've continued to work on this for multiple reasons, but, you know, really high one being that we are seeing, you know, older generations of people having to leave their homes and move to places where they no longer have their, like, their family, their culture, their they can't speak French, like, it's, you know, so it comes from a place of, like, not just developing for, you know, money in the long term, but like, it comes from a place of, I want to live here, I want to love living here, and I want the people who I love to live here. So it really comes from there. And from a development standpoint, we would have probably developed a significant more amount of units if it wasn't such a hard process. Every time you go to try to do something, it feels like you hit a wall, and you got to go talk to somebody else, and you hit another wall, and you got to make an agreement with somebody else. So it's definitely frustrating. I can understand why. There's not a lot of developers. But this is what we do, and we've done it, and we continue to do it, because we know that there's a bigger benefit at the other side. And so that's really where we're coming from.
Okay, thanks Rochelle. I think we'll have to leave it there. And we'll, you know, definitely commit to checking back in with you. And we'll do a little update, maybe at each meeting, to try to make sure that we keep some pace on the progress of this. Okay?
Yeah, the the main point is just we just need to know if you're in or you're out. Because that just we just don't want to keep doing the things that we're doing if we can't afford it. So we just kind of need to know where that contribution lies.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is new business. Sorry, I thought I pressed my button. Next item on the agenda is new business. And we're ready, I think, at this point, to do some presentations to Richmond County Food Banks. So I guess we'll get started. And I'll ask the councillors to participate, I think.
100%.
Yeah. And you're going to take some pictures. So we'll just ask for the pay your patience for folks watching at home. And we're going to do a few presentations. So we'll start with the Alma Damm Food Bank. And maybe I'll ask councillor Digden and deputy warden to come up and help me with that presentation, if that's okay. And whoever your representative is, if you wanted to come up here, and we'll take a nice, we'll take a nice picture of the flags. All right.
There you go.
If you go through the presentation, then you can look this way. Awesome.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much on behalf of the Alma Damm Food Bank. This is really needed.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure. Okay, so the next group is the St. Peters. St. Peters Area Food Bank would be next. Sue is here. Come on down. So thank you so much for all the work you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Got it, Greg. Also on our Facebook page. Thank you, guys. This is very much appreciated.
You're welcome.
We get what we do with money like that is we buy things that we don't normally pack in the bags every week, like, like toiletries. And now we've been buying like dish soap for them. Like, there's so many expensive things for them. But money really helps us do that. So anyways, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. All right. So the next is the Lewesdale and Area Food Bank Society. Do we have someone from Lewesdale here?
I'll deliver it.
You will deliver? Okay, councillor councillor Melanie Sampson will deliver on their behalf. And next is the Holy Guardian Angels Parish. And you'll deliver that? Okay, thank you. And one for Budlaidek Food Bank. Yes, exactly. Okay, thank you. All right. So thanks a lot to the folks in the gallery for coming in to receive those checks. And for folks who weren't able to be here, your councillors will deliver that those funds to you in time for for Christmas. So and thanks again to all of the food bank volunteers who are helping to make sure that people don't go hungry during the holidays, but also all year round. We appreciate your work. Okay, the next item on the agenda then is the extended producer responsibility for packaging paper products and packaging like products regulations. So that's a far cry from food banks. It's a little more, a little more technical in nature. But I did want to bring this forward, because we're looking at needing to make a motion. So this has been a essentially a provincial, province-wide initiative, is what I would say. I know that the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities has worked really hard on getting some EPR regulations in place. And so we're transitioning to a new industry-led program that's expected to take a couple of years. The first phase of the transition requires that we register if we choose to participate and provide data on our curbside recycling program. And the deadline to do that is January 1, 2024. So thus, we're bringing it forward now. And of course, you know, and just for folks maybe at at home, this is really related to the Environmental Goals and Climate Change Reduction Act. It lays out a series of goals to transition the province to a healthier, more sustainable future. And in August of this year, the province released two EPR regulations for packaging paper products, one of the goals, which was included in the act. And so divert Nova Scotia is administering that program. So I'm assuming that's who we would be registering with.
Differt to Chris, I think it is divert, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay, great. So this is our opportunity to opt in. And the recycling programs currently operated by municipalities will be assumed by an organization that will act on behalf of the various packaging producers. And details will continue to be provided as all parties work through the process. So essentially, the shift in responsibility for recycling to producers is estimated by the province to save Nova Scotia municipalities 20 to 25 million dollars annually collectively. But the direct savings to our municipality specifically is not really known at this time. So staff is recommending that we register for the new industry-led EPR for PPP program. It's a lot of ABCs, D E F Gs, but but certainly seems to align with our, you know, our goals around being more sustainable, saving costs, and costs landing appropriately where they should. So does anybody have any questions? Or if staff had any additional comments they wanted to make on this? No questions? Okay, so then I'd be looking for a motion to support the recommendation from staff that the municipality register for the new industry-led EPR for PPP program. I'll make that motion. Thank you, councillor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, councillor Brent Sampson. Is there any further discussion? I'm not going to say the motion again, because there's a lot of letters. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. So thanks a lot, Troy. And I know, Chris, you've worked on this as well. So really appreciate your work on that. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Warden's Council Report. So I did provide that in advance. Thank you for the nudge on that, Shelley. Sometimes I get it done like a week beforehand and then forget to send it in. So I appreciate the reminder. But are there any questions about the activities noted on that list? Okay, so hearing none.
It seemed like a quiet month.
It was a quiet month, yeah. Not so much. I did want to just mention that on it, though, there I did mention a letter of support for the physician for a physician to be located at the Dr. Kingston Memorial Community Health Center. And, you know, essentially, this is a physician that was looking to locate in the area. But, you know, sometimes they don't get to select where they're going to be located, because if they're involved in the practice ready assessment program, the PrEP program, we call it. So what we've done is kind of assumed a little bit of a community campaign to encourage that, you know, powers that be to allow that physician to locate here. And certainly took the opportunity to outline what it would mean for the health center as well. I don't and councillors would have a copy of that. So hopefully, we'll get a good result on that. Okay, if there's no other questions on the council report, then we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is our CEO is Administration Operations Report. So thank you, Troy and staff. I know everybody contributes greatly to this. And I, you know, I'm certainly finding it very helpful. I did want to ask, there was one question I had about, I think it was on the recreation side, community Department of Community Development and Recreation, a couple of bullets down, there's a mention of an online interactive map being completed by EDPC, and that it's completed, but some cosmetic upgrades are happening. Is that for the municipal planning strategy? I can't think what else.
I would have to check. And of course, the one director that's not here, she had a previous commitment, and she couldn't make it tonight. But I'll have to check with Shannon and get back to you.
Okay, thanks, Troy. That would be great if if you could do that, because I am still getting some questions from members of the public about the potential impact in the rural general zone in particular. So I think a map, I found the map, the interactive map, really helpful when members of the public were asking questions, because you could cut, you could click right in on their address and figure out what, you know, what the zoning restrictions would be. But then, of course, they took it down because it was a map based, you know, it was a map designed to accept feedback and comment, and that period is over. So they had to kind of make some adjustments there. So I'm hoping that that's what that is. So thank you for following up on that. That would be great. Are there any other questions on the admin report? Okay, so hearing none. I will move us on to the next item on the agenda. Please don't take the silence for lack of interest. This is super helpful, really helpful. Please don't take the silence for lack of interest. This is super helpful. Really helpful. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Community Acknowledgements. And we generally start this off with an acknowledgement of our Volunteer of the Month. So this year's or this month's past, past month's Volunteer of the Month was Charlene Bonan, who I believe is from the Deputy Warden's District. Okay, so I'm just going to read a little bit of her Volunteer of the Month nomination. It notes that Charlene stands as a pillar of compassion and community spirit in Richmond County. Her commitment to community service goes above and beyond to extend a helping hand to those in need. It's not uncommon to spot her offering rides to community members or running errands for community members on her way home from work. She sounds like a great neighbor. So Charlene's dedication to volunteerism spans many years. She, her active involvement with three local boards speaks volumes about her commitment to the betterment of the community. She serves on the Angel Fund, the New Horizon Senior Club, and the St. Anne's Auxiliary. She lends her time, expertise, and passion to various causes, making a positive impact on the lives of those who she serves. Beyond her board commitments, Charlene extends her volunteering efforts to Lape Cass, where she's an integral part of the community hub. Whether she's working behind the bar, waiting tables with a smile, or contributing her creative touch to event decorations, her versatility shines through. So please join us in recognizing Charlene for her hard work, dedication, and commitment to her community. For members of the public who know Charlene, give her a pat on the back, give her a round of applause. Because certainly people like Charlene keep our communities running and keep them as wonderful places to live. So we thank you very much, Charlene. Did you want to say anything else, deputy warden, or?
Well, everyone, I got some community acknowledgements.
Press your button?
Councillor Melanie is smiling over there, so she knows I got some community acknowledgements. So, yeah, so I just want to congratulate and acknowledge Charlene, that's, you know, and for everything she does for our community and and here on Al Madam, so and in Richmond County, so congratulations to her. Also want to congratulate Richie Thibault. Richie is a resident or former resident that grew up here in Bojerville, here on Al Madam. He's the son of Autwen and Zeta Thibault from Erishat. And Richie has the Director of Hockey Operations, which is also the General, General Manager role. Led the U-17 Team Canada White to a gold medal at World U-17 Hockey Challenge in Charlottetown. So when it comes to Richie, he's had a long career in in the hockey world. He was a amateur scout for the NHL's Calgary Flames for 12 years or so. And then he became a head scout for the St. John Seadogs in the Quebec Major Junior Hockey League. And he is now in his hometown of Moncton. He started with the Moncton Wildcats in 2017, 18 as a scout as well. But has assumed the role of General Manager and he's been in that role since 2020. So just want to congratulate Richie on all his hockey accomplishments. Everybody here on Al Madam, Richie in here in Pritagora, your family and your friends are very proud of your accomplishments and and bravo, bravo, my friend, so. Felicitatio Richie, tot modice al Madami, Pritagora, et firdit well. Bravo mon ami. Also, one more, if I may. Two more, two more, sorry. Yeah, yeah. So I had the privilege to attend the five-year anniversary for the Hearts of Al Madam Society last weekend. And when looking at that group, you know, as I said during that event, when you look at the the first five years of 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 that Hearts Home, it's called, they've provided their clients with, you know, a sense of security and a sense of independence and joy, hope, security, stability, routine, you know. And they've also provided them with a sense of belonging and a sense of family. And it's great, you know. And and for me, the most important thing is that they've provided them a home. And then when you look at, you know, to me, the quote that sticks out the most, and I told them this last weekend. You know, a quote that that stands out for all of those volunteers in in that group states that a happy home has a foundation of love and a framework of support. And all of those people associated with that great society is the foundation and the framework that provides the love and support to all their clients, right? So just want to acknowledge them and then thank them and, you know, congratulate them on their five-year anniversary. And the last one has to do with the Hearts of Al Madam Society as well. I want to thank the Director of Public Works and the staff here. I did notice the 13 beautiful wreaths. Again, Chris, I probably were about 14 or 15, not 13, but but no, I want to, I want to acknowledge your 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 accrual, Chris, for putting those up. They're all on the 13 poles here on our main street, Erishat, so thanks very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, deputy warden. See, unlucky 13 was avoided, two were purchased here in the building as well, so. All right, are there any other community acknowledgements? Yes, go ahead.
I I always hate following Sean. He's, he's, he's so passionate. It's lovely. I have I have two acknowledgements, one to the St. Louis CWL, who held their annual Christmas Bazaar. They always have great events there. On Sunday, I couldn't attend. I was, had a special pickup at the airport. But all accounts were that it was a really wonderful event with great, with a great market and always a great meal and a great merchandise bingo, so congratulations to them for that. And I'd also like to congratulate the local ATV clubs in my district, the West Richmond Riders Association and the Bearishaw Trail Association. They've been doing a lot of work on their respective trails over the past number of months. And I had a chance to go out recently and they're just looking spectacular, so both between like infrastructure work, but also in some of the nice things like installing garbage cans and picnic tables along the route to make things even more comfortable, I think, for for, you know, walkers, bicyclers, ATV'ers, whatever, so. And just always awesome to see people out on those trails. Nice to see them being developed. So congratulations and thanks to all the volunteers and all of those groups for the great things they're doing to make the district awesome.
Great, thank you councillor Sampson. Are there any other folks who would like to chime in? I'll just make one quick mention of, in St. Peters, recently, we did the tree lighting. I think it was last weekend. And it was, it went really well. Again, another community effort where everyone pitches in, so thanks to the folks who are making that happen. And I know that there are tree lightings and some Christmas events coming up throughout just about every community in Richmond County this year. So hope folks can get a chance to take advantage of those and come out and see them. I'm looking forward to that Christmas parade on Saturday night in Lordways. Let me tell you, it's always a doozy, so so we're we're looking forward to that. So thanks, folks, for your work on that. All right, so if there's nothing else, I'll move us on. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is correspondence, and we do have some that are action required. The first is a memo from CFO Jason Martel regarding a grant request from the Al Madam Food Bank for the Type IV Regional Health General Grant Funds in the amount of $1,000 to $2,000.
Sorry, warden, I've taken over the mic, but I do have to declare conflict because I'm the person who prepared the financials that you're going to look at.
Okay, thank you councillor Sampson. So so just moving on to the memo then, councillor Sampson has declared her conflict. The group has indicated that they're requesting at least $1,000 and could spend up to $2,000 if approved. But they stated that although they have quite a bit of funds in their bank account, those funds are mainly restricted for food purchases. And they don't have funds to purchase the equipment they're looking for in their application. So this is really more about the equipment than it is about the annual contribution that we do for food to the food banks. And maybe I'll ask one of, you know, either councillor from Al Madam, I don't know if you had any comments on this, but I'd open it for discussion at this point.
Councillor Sampson might have been pushing his button again to change the color of his. I think the only comment I would make, madam warden, is that our our fund is getting, I guess, slow, is getting low. But we still have money in our district funds. So I think at this time, I would be willing to probably meet somewhere in the middle at the $1,500 mark and take possibly $750 out of my district fund. And I can't speak for councillor Sampson, but I'm going to throw it over to him so that he's put on the hot plate and
Okay, thanks councillor Diggden. So you're proposing that you would put forward $750 from your district to funds. Okay, councillor, yeah?
Yeah, for sure. I think I think we're in agreement with that councillor Diggden. That's the direction I was going to take as well, knowing that our our regional fund is dwindling and we have several months to go. Yeah, I'd be willing to go $750 as well from my district fund and get them to the $1,500 mark. Thank you.
Okay, thanks deputy warden. So I think I'm hearing a motion frame up that we would approve a $1,500 contribution to the Al Madam Food Bank in the amount of $1,500 with four, with $750 to be allocated as follows: $750 from District One funds and $750 from District Two funds. Right?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks councillor Diggden.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you deputy warden. So the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Sampson? No? Okay. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? That motion is carried. Thanks, folks. You can come on back in. Councillor Melanie? All right. Okay, thank you. So the next item, and thanks to to Jason, of course, for preparing that application. I know you work with the groups who are who are getting ready to do so, and and we appreciate that effort, so. The next items on the agenda are several letters of support, but before that, there's the International Day for Persons with Disabilities proclamation. So I missed it by a day because I couldn't get my video to upload. But I did want to mention for members of the public that councillors had agreed, because we were creeping up, our our meeting was scheduled for the day after December 3rd, which is International Day for Persons with Disabilities. Councillors agreed by email that we could go ahead with a proclamation. So that has been issued out on our social media, I believe, at this point. Yeah, I had took downtown Ottawa connectivity to get it to upload for me, but we got it done. And certainly want to express our appreciation for, you know, folks living with disabilities in our community. And especially to the folks who are helping us be a more accessible community, particularly those on our accessibility committee, so. Any discussion on that item? Additional letters that were provided were the two letters of support, one for the physician, as I mentioned earlier, for the Dr. Kingston Memorial Health Centre, and one to Minister Lor regarding the wastewater management district project, so. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the review of checks issued for November 2023. And that's been issued, provided for information. Does anybody have any questions for staff on that? Okay, so hearing none, I'm going to move us on to the next item. It's the review of action items, so I was happy to be able to check a few things off of that list in the last couple of weeks. In terms of the letters and communications, so any questions on those? All right, if there's no questions, we'll proceed on to the items added to the agenda. And the first item added is the Marine Renewables Canada Conference for 2023, so councillors, I've provided a briefing note and I'll ensure that I've emailed this to Shelley as well, so she can make it formally a part of the package. Again, the not-so-brief briefing note, I apologize, but these conferences are, they're jam-packed with learning and information, and I always feel it's wise to capture it so that we don't lose the the thread of, you know, of what we're learning as we go along. I won't go through the whole note, but I will just mention that this year's conference was located in Ottawa. The last number of years, it's been in Halifax. But that was a purposeful, I think, and a very strategic move for MRC because they are advocating for the passing of Bill C-49, which is the Amendments to the Accord Acts, which will enable regulatory pathways for offshore renewables developments and expanding the authority specifically of the Canada Nova Scotia Offshore Petroleum Board to act as the regulator for those renewables. The presentations at the conference included content related to the development of supply chains, permitting grid capacity, sustainability, finance, resource assessment, and more. Nova Scotia, and specifically the energy projects here in the strait area, Bearhead, Everwind, DP Energy, were on frankly, they were the spotlight of the entire conference. There was a huge light shining on Nova Scotia and shining on the straitier, a strait area. And just also wanted to mention that Aegir Insights, they facilitate a panel with those parties that I just mentioned involved, and they continue to be a key source of research capacity for the province. And of course, Aegir is a company that's was founded by Scott Urquhart, who was originally from Dundee, but has, you know, made a career in the in the renewable sector, marine renewable sector in Denmark. So, you know, we were invited to participate in that conference, as we are every year, and was certainly glad to be able to go. I did note some of the key takeaways. You'll note in in the update that a lot of the activity was meeting with members of parliament, so you know, a few that that we would have had some contact with were Deputy Speaker Chris Dontrama, some very familiar names to the folks here in Al Madam, MP Daryl Sampson, former MLA Michelle Sampson, and former MP Roger Cusner, among others in attendance. And we made specific efforts to have conversations with those folks to talk about that enabling legislation and to see if there was anything we could do as a, as a, I guess, a community to to help get that bill passed. There is some opposition from, you know, from the opposition side of government right now, but we're hoping that, you know, by communicating with them about the importance of it for Atlantic Canada, and frankly, for all of Canada, this is a nation-building opportunity. Historic investments have already happened and are continuing to happen. And and of course, also, we continue to have our focus on you know, our messaging to to, you know, representatives is that we need it, we need to be, you know, the marine spatial planning work that's that needs to happen, the renewable you know, discussions that need to happen in our communities have to make sure that the that the interests of fishers and other ocean users are represented and and considered in in those discussions going forward. So so that's been a key feature of our messaging, and certainly, I think, one that has been received very well. Just wanted to mention from the key takeaways. Few, a few pieces I wanted to highlight was a lot of, there was a lot of talk around domestic market development, which I know has been a concern for some folks for the hydrogen projects that are proposed. Because they are primarily export development, but there was really a lot of talk at the conference and by developers around how do we increase the domestic market to make sure that maybe our bus fleets can be green and our, you know, you know, you know, they're working on, you know, heavy haul trucking, that kind of thing along, you know. So so there's some real work going on around that. And as well, paths to market and and both and global insights are pointing to regulatory certainty. So I, you know, at the end of the day, our message really has been, let's get this enabling legislation passed so that communities can focus on what's important, and that's supporting not just developers, but supporting our communities to make sure that those developments are right for our communities, right? And that that involves a lot of community engagement. So there are some offshore wind sessions that are going on right now across the, across Cape Breton Island, so I just want to bring that to the public's attention. I think the ones in Richmond County are on Monday. And I've asked the Cape Breton Partnership to provide us with a little graphic that we can share out on social media. I believe it's landed on Tellil. We're going to make sure that the word's getting out about that. Those sessions are being hosted by the Cape Breton Partnership and Net Zero Atlantic, so it's not a particular developer. It's so it's, there's not like that industry angle. It's very much information-based, a place where people can come and ask questions and and get more information about about what, you know, what offshore wind is all about and what it could mean for the community. And what we need to consider when we're when we're talking about implementing something like that, because it's, it will have big impacts, so. So we'll maybe share that information out. I think I talked long enough about that. There's a little light reading in your packages. We'll make sure that that's available to everyone and okay, thanks for indulging me on that item. I think, does anyone have any questions before I move on? Okay, traveling in the winter, not the best, not the best use of my time. Anyway, that's, it is what it is, right? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is 911 protocols. So I think councillor Diggden, you wanted to mention something about that.
I did. Thank you, madam warden, and thank you for the extra reading that you provided us. It's greatly appreciated. So I had a So I had a call this week from a resident in the community with a major concern, and I just wanted to brief everybody on the concern, and I think it brings back to something that myself and Counselor Sampson talked about when it comes to the magnets under fridge or letting first responders know if you have, you know, an issue or a problem or, you know, a health issue. But just to brief everybody, the lady in question had taken a seizure and was on the phone, somebody was on the phone with 911 for approximately 10 minutes, but then 911 had to let them go because they had another call. So before any ambulance or first responders or anybody showed up, 911 disconnected the call. So again, it kind of left the person in distraught that was taking care of the person with the seizure. And then two weeks ago, two weeks after, the same person had a similar episode, 911 stayed on the phone for several minutes with an ETA from the ambulance this time, but in the meantime, the local resident reached out to the volunteer fire department who responded. So I don't know, it's kind of just a briefing, you know, maybe for awareness that people might want to put a second number or a second contact or somebody who they can reach out to. I know the Almedam Volunteer Fire Department has stepped away from medical first response because of the numbers that, they still respond if required or if asked for assistance, but otherwise, if it goes out to the call-out 911, if it's an ambulance call-out, then they're not tagged in that call anymore. So it's just kind of an awareness to the people that, yeah. I don't know, I know the resident reached out to our MLA for a little bit of, you know, with concern that after 10 minutes, they were disconnected. And I understand, like, everybody, 911 is probably shorthanded as well, but...
Okay, thanks, Counselor Digdon. I know there are certainly lots of struggles still within our healthcare system, and I'm glad to hear that she reached out to the MLA. I think those, you know, those types of information are things we need to share so that they're aware of some of the gaps that are happening in the system. Really, thanks to your volunteer fire department for helping out with that, so. Okay, any questions for Counselor Digdon on that item? Okay, so hearing none, I'm going to move us on to the 15-minute question period. So the number to call is 902-226-9885. So if you're watching at home, you can call in, and we will take your question by phone. And when you do call in, we'll ask you to state your name, let us know where you're calling from, and we can take your question that way. But if there are members of the public who would, or members in the gallery right now, if you'd like to ask a question, you're welcome to come to the table and ask away.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So I have a question.
Just state your name. I know we heard from you...
Oh, I'm Claire Doyle, I'm with the Seniors Take Action Coalition, and I have a question, but I'd like to do a little background before asking the question.
Well, it's question period, Claire, so I'll ask you to keep your question real short.
I'll keep it very quick. I'll be very quick. So in June 2023, the HRM Council approved a voluntary vulnerable persons registry. This is a voluntary self-referral list for residents who require more support during emergency situations. It also provides important information to first responders and emergency management staff and volunteers to help appropriately respond to residents' needs in situations such as sustained power outages, severe storms, and more. This is an issue that has been a concern for the Seniors Take Action Coalition for some time now, knowing that we have many seniors that live alone in rural areas. The question is, has Richmond County considered the possibility of a voluntary vulnerable persons registry as part of its emergency response? Is it possible that the emergency management officer can work with STAT, which is the Senior Take Action Coalition, to explore this option of moving ahead with the registry? So that was my question.
Thank you, Claire. And it's a great question, and I 100% agree that it needs to happen, that we do need a vulnerable persons registry of some sort. I can tell you that at the latest Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Conference, it came up as a question to Minister Lor for Municipal Affairs and Housing, because, you know, there are many folks within the municipalities that feel we could use a provincial standardized registry, right? So that each municipality is not reinventing the wheel in terms of building a system to house this data and how you collect it, et cetera, et cetera, right? Doesn't look like the provincial government is interested in doing that. They really do feel that it is a municipal responsibility. It is something that we have discussed, we've received correspondence about it and sent correspondence about it, back and forth with the provincial government. And I believe Troy has indicated to me, and this is why we were just having a quick chat while you were asking your question, there is a response back from the province, and it will be coming back in our next council package in a couple of weeks. So the answer is yes, we are considering, we have discussed it. So, you know, we just needed to wait for that response back from the province, and then we'll make a decision on how or if we move forward. There, you know, there would be probably budgetary implications and some process that we would need to work out in terms of how we would go about even establishing something like that. But very glad to know that STACK is kind of on the case, and, you know, we may call upon you to assist us with figuring that whole thing out when the time comes. But I do agree, it's a much-needed service. There's many seniors in our community in particular, people with, you know, mobility challenges that, you know, they're left in the dark and the cold, you know, if, you know, if things go sideways with a major weather event. I think about the fires that occurred, and, you know, we were all very nervous last summer, you know, hoping that a spark wouldn't light here, and, yeah, there's, it's a gap in our emergency measures, and hopefully that, you know, I guess hopefully we can find a way to fix it in short order, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions? Okay. So hearing none, and the phone hasn't rang, and I think the question would have definitely accounted for the delay, so I am going to move us in camera, but before I do that, I have to just circle back on the, it's not really a community acknowledgement, but as we close out committee of the whole tonight, I just want to mention that in the last month or so, we have celebrated long-term service awards for staff here at the municipality. 11 people were recognized with service awards, I think, of 10, 20, and 25 years. And altogether, those 11 people, they bring about 185 years of service and experience to the municipal operations. So could we just give them a little round of applause? Please and thank you. Yes, thank you. So at this point then, I'll ask for a motion to move us in camera for a discussion on land and legal. Please and thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Digdon. Can I have a second, or? Thanks very much, Counselor Sampson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.